Call to order this regular meeting of the Board of Trustees for Tuesday, February 26, 2019. And would you call the roll for us?
I certainly will.
Thank you.
Trustee Calvert?
Here.
Trustee Cottrell?
Here.
President Simon-Holland?
Here.
Trustee Kelly?
Here.
Trustee Minneto?
Here.
Vice President Raymond?
Here.
I am here. And our student, Anati Ali, are here. Yes. Madam President, everyone's here, and we have a call.
Great. Thank you very much.
Uh huh.
Anati, would you lead us in the pledge to allegiance? Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Thanks for being with us today. It's great to have you. Okay. Our next item is public comment. Do we have public comment?
Malia Pakta.
Malia, welcome. Thank you for being here.
Thank you. I just kind of wanted to talk about some of the lack of transparency and accountability that is prevalent in the community right now. Most recently, with the placing of administrative leave for the principal and vice principal at Galena with pay, looked like there was probably about $17,000 a month going out to them each month. And then you had to pay interim administrators also. There's been no explanation as to why that was. And it's just recently been learned by the public that the principal has resigned his position, again, with no explanation. I understand personnel matters are confidential, but there should be something that you can put out to the public and let us know what's going on with the money that we're paying to these educators and to you. In addition, the currently illegal standing of the Digital Days policy. I don't know who put that out. I don't remember it being talked about before. It was just implemented this year. There are a lot of flaws in that, besides the fact that the Department of Education and the Attorney General's Office have come out saying that it's an illegal policy. I'm not sure who in the district has suggested that you continue with that against the Department of Education and the Attorney General's Office. I don't know if it's been your legal counsel that's had any input on that. It sends us a message to the students that if they don't like a law, they just don't have to follow it. It doesn't apply to them because they don't like it. We, as parents, we're not trained to be teachers. The work that my elementary school kids get, it's busy work. The work that my middle schooler get, it's busy work. It was read for 20 minutes, which she does on a snow day regardless of an assignment. Watch an episode of Mythbusters and answer like four questions. It's ludicrous that this passes as education. The public is upset and dissatisfied with the board. That's why Mr. Cottle has been elected. He's the only one that has replaced a previous trustee. There are two new trustees because the other trustees decided to not run again. But you guys, you are accountable to us as the people. The superintendent is accountable to you as the board. And you guys need to start being more transparent and letting the public, who, again, pays your salary, what you're doing. You need to let us know what you're doing.
Thank you, Malia. Appreciate the comments.
Mara Sanderson?
Okay.
That's all at this time.
Thank you. I would just, as a board report item, explain that we will have an item on the Digital Days program on our agenda on March 12. And we'll be providing all of that information for the public. And again, that program was approved by the Department of Education in writing through the year 2020. We had it in place in inclined schools all last year. And so we'll be happy to talk with public about that as a scheduled agenda item on March 12. Okay. All right. Let's go on to 1.05. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Thank you, Vice President Raymond. Second by trustee Cottle. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay. We have quite a few items on our consent agenda. And I do want to note, and thank you trustee Cottle for catching it, we had a typo in item 2.05 related to the ending date of the agreement. And in 2.05, it is consideration of renewal of the contract with School Safety Advocacy Council for professional services related to school safety and sustainable initiatives for school safety beginning April 13, 2019. And it should say ending April 12, bless you, 2020, not 2018, 2020, in the amount of $115,000 as recommended by the Safe and Healthy Schools Commission. Are there any other questions on consent items? We did have some questions that staff provided answers to, and that has been posted with the agenda. Is there any public comment on any of the consent items? Okay. Hearing none. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Motion by Dr. Taylor?
Second.
Second by trustee Kelly. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. We are going now to items under three. And we did have a request to move up item 3.03, so Mr. Young can get his driver's license. Would you like to? Would you like to come up, Mother Young, and do your presentation on 3.03? I caught you off guard, didn't I?
For the record? For the record, my name is Tiffany Young. I'm the coordinator of Equity and Diversity. So thank you for the adjustment, yes, so that Mr. Young could get his driver's license. Board policy 9210 is the Equity and Diversity policy, and we have brought it back before the board for approval. We took it back to our task force and have reviewed language, one, to make sure that we are in compliance with what our school district board policies typically have. There was language around specifically how the Equity Task Force would operate. Additionally, we had language around specifically how we look at the language that we use for assessment. I met with the Assessment Department and talked about how we wanted to make sure that the wording was inclusive and that it included areas around linguistic conversations around the assessments that happen in the district, not so much the wills, the shalls, all those things. Additionally, we looked at what the board is going to be committed to do, and not that we can't say what the board would do, but necessarily more about what the board is committed to do as a district, and covering multiple areas as being advice for our superintendent. The last part is that the superintendent may develop the administrative regulations, procedures, and/or practices. The Equity and Diversity Task Force does not necessarily have the power to do these things, and we didn't want language in our policy that said or misled the process. So we worked with our task force, worked with the Assessment Department, and worked with other community members to review it, to ensure that we would update and modify the language to fall in line with other policies within the Washoe County School District.
Okay. Other questions? Tiffany?
Yes.
The section under Governing Practices 2B, in the draft, we have, the Equity Task Force is X-ed out in that draft, and I just wanted to give you an opportunity to comment on that.
So, and this was a great deal of conversation with the task force. They had some concern, but we wanted to make sure that we had language that, again, fell in line with what we could legally state and what the policies and processes were. And so the task force itself, serving as a resource to provide an equity lens for district policies programs, so on and so forth, that the department shall facilitate an Equity Task Force in the meeting and the needs. It's really more about shared commitment and leadership, because if the task force goes away, it doesn't mean that the work of Equity and Diversity will go away. It will still be shared commitment and voice of the community. So we want to make sure that the policy addresses that and ensuring that we not necessarily are getting rid of the Equity and Diversity Task Force, but ensuring that we have collaborative voice at the table.
Okay. So, again, we're not getting rid of the Equity and Diversity Task Force. We're just making sure that the references, that's not, Equity and Diversity isn't just the task force's job.
Correct. It is district-wide. It is all of our responsibility.
Okay. All right. Any questions? Any other comments? Do we have a motion on 3.03? Thank you. Oh. Trustee Kelly. Okay.
Thank you, Madam President. I move that the Board of Trustees provide preliminary approval to the proposed revision of Board Policy 9210, Equity and Diversity, initiates 13-day public comment period.
Thank you, trustee Kelly. Is there a second? Second by trustee Minneto. Okay. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Good luck with the driver's license.
Thank you very much. Have a wonderful day.
All right. You too. Okay. Let's go back then to 3.01, which is Discussion of Possible Action to Provide Preliminary Approval to the Proposed Revision of Board Policy 5105, Student Uniforms, Adoption of a Site-Based Policy, which adds language related to the purpose of uniforms, and to give discretion to the school principal related to free dress days, and initiate 13-day public review and comment period. And David Lasik, Chief of Staff, and Vanji Russell, our project manager, here. Thank you.
Thank you. David Lasik, Chief of Staff, for the record. So, we did make a change from the February 5 Board Policy Meeting, which is on page three, highlighted in yellow. It adds language that the superintendent can direct changes to a site-based, so a school-based uniform policy if there are changes to state or federal laws, because we have had that happen on a couple of occasions. And so we wanted to make sure we had the flexibility to make site-based changes as needed. Other than that, there were no changes to the policy from the Policy Committee.
Okay. Any other questions or comments or discussion?
Just a quick question. David, can you maybe give an example of a federal change that, just so we have better context?
Sure. We had a middle school ruling recently where it, a student had a "D" on their shirt, and we said that was against the policy, but it went through the courts and they deemed it appropriate. So in that case, we needed to make changes to the site-based policies.
Okay. Okay. Any other discussion? Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion, Madam President. I move that the Board of Trustees provides preliminary approval to the proposed revision of Board Policy 5105, Student Uniforms, Adoption of a Site-Based Policy, and initiates a 13-day public comment period.
Is there a second? Second by trustee Calvert. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Okay. Item 3.02, Discussion of Possible Action to Provide Preliminary Approval to the Proposed Adoption of Board Policy 6525, Gifted and Talented Education, which speaks to provide an educational programming for students capable of performing at significantly advanced academic levels, and initiate the 13-day public review and comment period. And Ms. Byersdorf and Ms. DiMartino?
Good afternoon.
Nice to have you back.
Thank you.
Thank you.
President Simon-Holland, Superintendent Davis, members of the board. Director DiMartino and myself are here today to bring back a brand-new policy that we talked to you about a few weeks ago, specifically Policy 6525, which would govern our gifted and talented programming in the school district. Since we've been with you, there have been no changes made to the proposed policy.
Okay. And again, as Ms. DiMartino and others reminded us earlier today, if we offer gifted and talented educational programming, we have to offer it equitably to every student that qualifies, and that's certainly a big challenge. But this is good to have all of this in policy. Thanks for the adding of the evidence-based curriculum where it's appropriate. Appreciate that. Any other questions or comments on this? Okay. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Madam President. The only comment I have is, I think it's really exciting for us to have a policy about gifted and talented education, because so often, you know, people think that those children on the higher end of the spectrum don't have as much of a commitment or care as the rest of the students. By putting the policy in place, it says that we're committed to this. And it's interesting that we never had one.
Yes. It is interesting.
It's interesting that we never had one. So thank you for your work in that.
You're welcome. Absolutely. And I think it was a great testament to this district's investment in gifted and talented programs, to hear from parents in our last session who moved here. And that parent was not the only one we've heard from that moved here because of the great programs we have in our district. I have to say, as a child, I was in a gifted and talented program in California, and I spent most of my time in the study hall. So I think it's great that we, you know, that we get to have that. And it was clearly a misassignment. I was inaccurately assigned to that program, I'm quite sure. But anyway. Okay. Is there a motion?
Sure. I'll make this motion.
Thank you, Dr. Taylor.
You're very welcome. Where am I? Oh, there we are. I move that the Board of Trustees provides preliminary approval to the Proposed Adoption of Board Policy 6525, Gifted and Talented Education, and initiates a 13-day public comment period.
Second by Vice President Raymond. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thanks for the little entertaining, allowing me to do the sidebar there. Okay. Okay.
Is that on the agenda?
No. Okay. We've done 3.03. We are on 3.04, Discussion of Possible Action to Provide Preliminary Approval to the Proposed Revision of Board Policy 7505, District Vehicles, formerly entitled Use of District Vehicles, which includes language related to the use and maintenance of district-owned vehicles to include school buses, and the proposed deletion of Board Policy 7510, School Bus Replacement, which becomes redundant, and initiate the 13-day public review and comment period. And David Lasik and Rick Partner here. Thank you, gentlemen.
David Lasik, Chief of Staff, for the record. There are no changes from the Board Policy Committee, but I do want to reiterate the section that was talked about at the budget work session, the elimination of the assignment of district-owned vehicles, and that's eliminated through this policy as well. And I just want to call that to the attention for several reasons, for cost savings, and then for the optics that you mentioned earlier.
Great.
Other than that, there are no changes.
Thank you. And I think even had we not changed that policy or that expenditure item, I think this is a good amendment to the policy authorizing use. It's just authorizing use of a vehicle. So appreciate that. Any comments by anyone? Any questions? Hearing none. I'll entertain a motion. Oh, and we don't have any public comment? I assume you'll flag me if we do. Okay. Anyone making a motion? Okay. Thank you, trustee Cottle.
I move that the Board of Trustees provides preliminary approval to the Proposed Revision of Board Policy 7505, District Vehicles, formerly Use of District Vehicles, and the Proposed Deletion of Board Policy 7510, School Bus Replacement, and initiates a 13-day public comment period.
Thank you, trustee Cottle. Is there a second? Second by trustee Minneto. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Okay. And actually, if we could turn off your microphone when you're not, yeah, there we go. Thank you. No, it's okay. 3.05, Discussion of Possible Action to Provide Preliminary Approval to the Proposed Revision of Board Policy 5000, Student Records and Information, which revises language defining personally identifiable information, and initiate the 13-day public review and comment period. David Lasik is here, and Dr. Lapenta. And I know we did have some discussion about these, and I think this one might, we might have some opportunity for discussion among board members, because there are some things in here that are, we want to make sure that we're very precise and that they have unmistakable meaning. We did have some emails about this. So David and Bryn, if you want to kick us off.
Thank you, David Lasik, for the record. And with me is Bryn, Dr. Bryn Lapenta from Student County. There are two, first, I will highlight two changes that were made from the Board Policy Meeting. First, on page two, it just adds the word "an electronic cumulative record." And then on page four, from the discussion from the meeting, we added the word "maintenance" under the little "II" section, so practices for ensuring the appropriate and adequate maintenance and destruction of student records. So those are the two changes from the Policy Committee. There was a question asked about how is third-party, how is a third-party vendor defined? And that is a FERPA definition that we have provided, so that comes straight from the U.S. federal government. So we are and do, as all districts do, are allowed to share information with contractors, consultants, volunteers, and other third parties we contract with to do certain services. So we can share personally identifiable information, PII as it's referred to by the federal government, in certain cases where there's a need to do so, and there's an educational need to do so. And we do do that. So the institution needs to perform instructional service, or the person needs to perform an instructional service. And the direction to that individual or company has to be under our control. In other words, they can't be independently operating with student information, so we have to have direct control over the work of that contractor, volunteer, vendor, whatever the case may be. We also provided a list of those third-party services. That is on our website. It's on the Student Accounting website under the FERPA section about who we share information with. We're very open and honest on that website.
Transparent.
Transparent. Thank you. About what we do with FERPA, because we take FERPA very seriously, and we do not share information with other parties unless there's a need to do so. In the cases that we do, we have specified contracts that talk about what information is shared, when it's shared, how it's shared, and the timeframe for which it's shared, and when that information is destroyed. So that was a good question raised by trustee Cottle, and we just wanted to call that to the attention and for discussion if there are any questions for the board.
Great. Thank you. Trustee Cottle?
Yeah, I asked a question only because I had a constituent ask me, what's a third-party vendor? And I really couldn't answer it. So what I would propose, I don't know if I can make an amendment, is that under definitions, it would say what a third-party vendor is and where to find the Washoe County School District third-party vendors. So any parent or constituent or staff member that wants to go and take a look for themselves what the definition is and where to go find that list, then they can do so right from this policy.
Yep. It's a great idea.
Is that something that we amend here?
Absolutely.
And then, okay. Could I make that motion?
You can. Let's hold on and see if there are anything, any other changes we wanted to make. I think that on that, we might also add that, in the definition, that a third-party educational vendor is only working with student information under the direct supervision of a district employee, staff member, however you say that in the prior, it is said here, and I appreciate that protection in the language of whatever it is, 2DII, who is under the direct control of the school with respect to the use and maintenance of personally identifiable information. And you might even, in the definition, tie back to FERPA as the source of that definition. And I appreciate that, under the governing policies, in 1D, or governing principles, you specifically say, before we talk about anything else, that it's treated in a confidential and professional manner by folks who have a legitimate educational interest prior to access to the student records or information. So I think you've done everything in the policy that we need to do. The, you know, the challenge is always, can we enforce all of that with every single transaction that any educational vendor or anyone else might, you know, might be interested in? I know we're trying to make sure that our technology systems do everything they can to prevent unauthorized access. So I think we're doing all we can. Are there other comments before we let trustee Cottle make a motion? Okay. Please go ahead, trustee Cottle.
I move to amend Board Policy 5000 to include, under definitions, the district defining of third-party vendors, as well as including where to find third-party vendors for our district on our website.
And that the definition is based on, or is consistent with?
Yeah, that the definition's consistent with FERPA.
Great.
I know you guys have that definition.
Do we, before, I'm going to second that, but just before, maybe I second it first.
Why don't you second, and then we'll have discussion?
Second.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Taylor.
You added another part. Thank you, Madam President. Excuse me. You added another part, that it should state that they're under the direct supervision of, should that be a part of this amendment as well?
It will be.
I know it's in there.
It will, we will include it as a definition, as part of the definition for third-party vendors. It's all included in the FERPA definition of what that is.
Okay. So that will be covered just by definition.
You okay?
So it's basically this paragraph that are included in our notes for?
Essentially, but we'll expand it and tweak it to make it more user-friendly.
Okay. Yeah.
Okay. I'm getting kicked under the table by legal counsel, that that's a substantial enough revision, that we'll need to bring this back, but it's a good one, and that's why this process has several steps in it. So rather than it being preliminary approval and initiating the 13-day public comment period, we'll bring it back with those amendments, and it will come before the board subsequently with that language in it for preliminary approval to go out to the public comment.
So do we just vote on that amendment, then?
I think we can vote on the amendment and, but leave off the last part of it and ask that it come back to the board.
Yeah, ask that it come back to the board at a future meeting.
Mm-hmm.
We'll bring it back, probably bring it back to the next meeting, but just say future meeting.
So you can, the secondor and the maker of the motion can, go ahead.
No, no. Go ahead.
Well, I was just going to say, you can, you can ask that your motion be revised to include that, that it come back to the board, and then the secondor can agree with that.
If we accept those friendly amendments, am I correct?
Yeah. That's good for me.
Can JJ, you clear on the?
And then do we vote on the amendment, then?
And we wanted to say in the definition section that it be consistent with FERPA definition.
And we also want, as part of the motion, that the staff bring it back to a future.
It says that.
Yeah. Right. No worries. I was going to say that to him, because he asked a question.
Yeah. I accept all that.
Okay. Okay. Great. All right. So is there any further discussion? Is there any public comment? Okay. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Great, great discussion and very thoughtful input. Thank you, trustee Cottle. 3.06, Discussion of Possible Action to Provide Preliminary Approval to the Proposed Revision of Board Policy 7620, Records Management, formerly Document and Records Management, which revises language related to the process of document retention and destruction when those documents are not student records, and initiate the 13-day public review and comment period. Mr. Lasik and Dr. Lapenta?
Thank you.
Yours again.
Yep. David Lasik, Chief of Staff, for the record. This was brought forward to at the 25 Policy Committee Meeting. There are no changes that were made at the meeting, and there are no changes that we are proposing after the meeting either.
Okay. Any discussion? Any questions on this one?
I'm prepared to make the motion.
All right. Please do, Dr. Taylor.
And in that, thank you, Madam President. I would like to say, this is, it's great to have this, because we pay so much attention[1735.86] to have this, 'cause we pay so much attention to student records, but, you know, we have personnel records and others as well, and for this one, as well as the previous Agenda Item, to also include the destruction, because we know that's come up as well. So, just thank you for being so thorough. So, with that in mind, I move that to Board of Trustees, provides preliminary approval to the proposed adoption of Board Policy 7620, Records Management, and initiates the 13-day public comment period.
Excellent, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Trustee Calvert. Is there any further discussion? I just wanna say, Dr. Lapenta, you know, you need to talk a little less when you come forward to make a presentation. I'm just joking. Okay. Hearing no other comments, and I assume there's no public comment, JJ? All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, thank you. Sorry to poke you there, Bren. All right, 3.07. Presentation and discussion on community and family engagement efforts regarding community summer programs and district resources for families. Boy, did you guys hit the jackpot on that.
Didn't we just?
Charted the course this weekend.
Oh.
I bumped into Senator Cortez Masto, who could not say enough about what a fabulous event that was. Yeah, so, thank you all.
Good afternoon, President Simon Holland, Trustees Superintendent Davis, for the record, Irene Payne, Chief Communications and Community Engagement Officer, and I'm joined this afternoon by?
Haven't been here in a while. Fatima Rivas, good afternoon.
And what I thought you were going to refer to, President Simon Holland, was the school expo back in August last year. So, for those new trustees on the board, we had, and it was actually their superintendent's idea to have a school expo, back-to-school expo, and we had that in August at Meadowwood Mall, and we had around 500 families, over 1,000 individuals, come and talk to us, because we had everything that families and guardians need from the school district to help their kids start school, continue in school, and have that a really successful experience. All that information was in one place. And what it did do is, it absolutely demonstrated to us, to the school district, that our families want that information, they need that information. So, that obviously means we're not gonna stop with having an annual event. And before I hand over to Ms. Fatima, I just wanna play you this very quick snippet of a video. JJ?
Save the date for the Summer Camp Expo and Family Fair, Saturday, March 16th, from noon to 3:00, at the Center Court of Meadowwood Mall in Reno. Families will find information about upcoming summer camps and programs for their children, raffle prizes, school registration for the 2019-20 school year, workshops regarding special education services, resources to help you finish this school year strong, and to prepare for next year. This free event is a collaboration between Washoe County School District and Girl Scouts of the Sierra Nevada, March 16th, from noon to 3:00, at the Center Court of Meadowwood Mall in Reno.
So, that's, excuse me, good afternoon, President Simon Holland, Trustees Superintendent Davis, for the record, Fatima Rivas, multicultural outreach specialist for the Communications and Community Engagement Department. So, that was the promo that we're using for the upcoming Summer Expo and Family Fair. One of the things that I wanna highlight is that this event is something that we're putting together in collaboration with Girl Scouts of the Sierra Nevada. So, this is an effort to outreach to other community partners, to really forge relationships that have long-lasting effects. We understand the importance of working with other providers of after-school programs and summer school programs, 'cause they're an extension of the learning that's happening in our schools. For this event, as I mentioned, it's gonna be held at Meadowwood Mall. We found that to be a great location and venue for working families, who is our target audience. We're gonna have also information about district resources, so we're gonna have, for instance, information about kindergarten registration, is the time right now this spring to get kids registered for next school year, so we're gonna have hands-on support for that. We're gonna have information about immunization guidelines for incoming students, free and reduced lunch applications for students, and information about parent-university classes. We're also gonna have a recruitment table by Human Resources. Last time, they said they actually made a lot of great connections with our community and families, so we're gonna offer that again. One of the things that we're doing differently this time around is that the Department of Student Support Services is actually gonna be having workshops for families around the services provided by Special Education Department. So, they're gonna have 30-minute workshops from noon till 4:00, different topics around just navigating the IEP system to specific strategies for different learning disabilities and abilities for students. So, that's something different that we'll be offering this time. Let's see, what else? We're gonna have bilingual staff, and we're also gonna have an American Sign Language interpreter available for the first time at our expo. That's something that, through the Department of English Language Development, they acquired this year, so we're gonna have that available for our families. And we are gonna have raffle prizes for the, we're gonna have over 20 different organizations in our community that provide after-school and summer school programs, and they're gonna have raffle prizes, including like a week worth of summer camp for our families. So, just incentives again for families, that we know need those services during the summer. And also, don't forget that we're gonna have a back-to-school expo, so you can mark your calendars, once more this school year, for the Saturday before school starts, so that's August 10, and it's gonna be at the same venue. Thank you, that's all we have.
We hope you'll join us. It was great fun last year at the expo, had a wonderful time. I loved the little tiny, tiny kids holding up the frame of their graduation picture for, you know, class of 2035, or whatever it was. It was really cute. Vice President Raymond?
I just had a question. It sounds like you have a great outreach of, and different groups attending. When we changed the policy last year about flyers being distributed in our schools, I know that impacted a lot of outside groups. Have we targeted some of those groups that we know aren't, okay, I see nodding heads.
Yeah, purposely, we have reached out to different organizations that we know offer those services, like after-school programming, and they have been invited, and many of them have agreed to come and join us, so yes.
Great, thank you.
Okay, any other comments on that? Well, thank you, really, really great involvement by the community, and we absolutely appreciate all the work that it takes to put these events together, but it, from the response that we get, it seems like it's very much valued by parents and families, so thank you. Okay, thanks. Okay, that then will take us to Board Reports. Would anyone like to start on Board Reports? Okay, Trustee Minneto?
I had a wonderful two weeks. I went to the Honor Band concert, which was phenomenal. There was one little boy there who'd been in the Honor Band, in the Honor Choir, in the Honor Orchestra, in the Honor Jazz Band, four Honor groups this year. Yeah, he was an amazing kid. And, oh, I've been asking kids about what they think, what's going on with the digital days, and gotten quite a bit of feedback on, "Oh, yeah, uh-huh", you know? So, it's interesting, been several places, so, yeah.
Okay, Trustee Kelly, you wanna go next? Pass? Okay, he's been trying to sleep. And transport, okay. Trustee Cottle?
Yeah, last meeting, some of you talked about the committees you're on. Mine isn't as exciting, since I'm on the Debt Management Commission, but this month, Washoe County wanted to do $50 million in bonds for, replace sewer plant and stuff in South Reno, so we approved that, that was exciting. And then, I went to happy hour for a little bit last week, I know Vice President Raymond was there, but of course, all the snow we've had, I had to leave early to get back into the North Valleys, but that was, that was cool to see, cool to see the work that they are doing for our kids in our schools. And I can say personally, I'm looking forward to the next meeting, to have a conversation about the digital days. Constituents have been sending me quite a bit of questions to ask, and I think it'd be a great opportunity for our community to come together and ask questions, and see what's going on, so I will yield.
Thanks. Okay, Dr. Taylor?
Thank you, Madam President. Just a couple of things. One is, I joined yourself, and then Vice President Raymond, we were there to, at the memorial service for a great friend of education, really a great friend of the community, I mean, Jim Farmer. I mean, it was, the place was packed, which is such a wonderful tribute to him. It was really good to see so many people there, so just to go there and just thank his family, you know, for loaning him to us for so long, and his involvement, whether it's volunteering at Lemelson, to being involved in the Washoe Foundation, and just so many other things. So, he'll certainly be missed, he'll certainly be missed. And then, the other thing I wanted to mention was the panel discussion. I got to sit down on with yourself and with Trustee Minneto, and it was the mini-conference for the Student Services Staff, for the Office of Student Services, and we were there, and I stayed actually for a little bit to see a presentation from the Innovation Scholars, but it was just great to have that staff there, and get a chance to answer questions for them, and I just flown in the night before, I was really tired and really sick, but I was glad I went and stayed.
Good.
It was great for them to have us there.
And I know they appreciated it. Okay, good. Nanti, do you wanna?
Yeah. Um, I, a really exciting thing that's happening this Friday, we're having our Student Voices Conference. Michelle's been working really, really hard on it, like, this entire school year, and we've had like a lot of students show up to our planning meetings, like, outside of our board. So, I think it's gonna be really good this Friday. And then, outside of like board and just like student perspective, I have been hearing a lot about the digital days, like, all over Twitter, all over school, all over my friends from different schools, so it's gonna be really interesting to talk about it next meeting. And then, on top of that, just like, besides digital days, I've been hearing a lot about dress code, and like, there's a lot of like student perspective coming in, especially with like the year winding down, so there's gonna be a very, very heavy discussion next meeting.
Okay, good, and we appreciate you and all of your colleagues that serve on the Student Advisory Council, 'cause you give a lot of extra time, and it's really appreciated. We need to hear, we need to know how these things affect students, so thank you. Trustee Calvert?
I was able to go to school visits, which was kinda fun, with the principals, and I really enjoyed both of those. And then, me, Ellen, and Scott were at Depoli yesterday with the yearbooks, and that was really fun. They talked about the digital days, and they had brought, Ellen and Scott brought in their yearbooks, and we did kind of a comparison, and that was really kind of interesting, how things have changed over the years. But, they were really fun, they were engaging, they were asking us questions, and I thought it was a lot of fun, so look forward to those.
Excellent, great, okay. Vice President Raymond?
I'll just touch on to the communities and schools fundraiser, happy hour. Last week, it was one of the worst nights of the week, in terms of weather, and the place was packed, there were so many people there, supporting communities and schools, which is really an incredible program for our district, and they had a great student speaker from Innovations High School that shared her story. She had actually was at HUG, and then moved to Innovations, and so had the ability to carry the services from HUG over, and was really inspirational in her presentation or talk. And I was able to join the superintendent on another terrible weather day last week at Dilworth. Actually, it was the same day, that was a really bad day for weather.
Terrible day.
But, to Dilworth Middle School, and just really enjoyed the visit. It's not a school that I represent as a trustee, but we always love being able to just see what's happening at our schools, and it makes the day brighter when I get to go to a school. Thank you for letting me tag along superintendent.
Okay. Well, I had a couple of other things I did, attended the EDON Board Meeting, and it's pretty impressive what's happening in our region with regard to higher-wage jobs coming in. One of the things that the Economic Development Authority looks at is what's the average wage of the jobs that we're assisting to bring into the region, and it's been steadily increasing. You'd be surprised to know that, right now, the average wage of the jobs that they're being, recruiting into our region, puts those jobs at about $70,000 a year, which is, you know, very, very impressive. And EDON has a housing summit coming up, and they're, I think it's on the 7th, very important topic, and it is, I think it's to their credit, that the Economic Development Authority is looking at how do we balance housing with bringing jobs into the market? So, that's gonna continue to be quite an effort. And had a great lunch with Mike Kazmierski, and he was very interested in how he and EDON can help us advocate at the legislature for increased funding for schools, so we're gonna help them be working on that, because we know how critical their help was in passing WC-1, so we're, their voice really carries, so we're gonna work on that. Also, attended the service with Vice President Raymond and Trustee Taylor from Jim Farmer, and also attended the service, I know Kristen was there and others, for Mike Kate, who has been the Chair of our Capital Funding Protection Committee. That was very moving. Did a school visit to Alice Smith, attended the Regional Planning and Governing Board Meeting, where they're beginning the conversation about potentially including, as projects of regional significance, any school that would have more than 325 students, which is every school we would build. So, we're gonna be working with the Regional Planning and Governing Board and those members on seeing that we can have an intelligent solution to that challenge. And we thank the Washoe County Commission for passing unanimously our purchase of the Wild Creek property, and we thank all the students who came forward, and all the families who came forward to help pass that. And then, I've just been responding to lots of emails on behalf of the board. So, we're, well, it's my privilege, and I appreciate that the board supports me in speaking for you, so thank you. Superintendent?
I just have shirts and stickers for Strength and Voices.
All right.
It's gonna be super exciting on Friday.
We'll be there, I think we'll all be there.
We'll after the HUG, we'll T.C., I'll be there.
Okay, anything else you wanted to add, Soup?
No, I don't.
Okay.
I did.
She did get a big award. She got a national award, a lifetime award, Lifetime Achievement Award, which is a pretty cool thing, and we are very...
How you do that in 30?
She's packed a lot in, packed a lot in. Okay, let's, if there's nothing else on the reports, let's go to future agenda item requests. I know Trustee Cottle has one.
Yeah, I would like to request for a future board meeting for discussion and possible action, to discuss the time and day of the week of the regular meetings of the Board of Trustees. I think the public would like our meetings to be later in the day. The location should be discussed, 'cause I know the county offices could potentially be available. I think this discussion is long overdue, I think we should have it, have it honestly with our community, and offer our meetings a time that the public can feel a part of the process, so, thank you.
Thank you, and we won't have discussion on that, but I did talk with Trustee Cottle about that, and I certainly agree with that being on the agenda. I also had a, have a request for a future agenda item. We've had a lot of emails about the district potentially going from Microsoft Educational Tools to the Google Suite, and I just wanted to, right, right, yeah, going, eliminating the Google Suite, and only going with Microsoft. And because it is an item, and we've had a lot of requests for discussion on, I'd like to see us have a discussion and possible direction on that. I know it's an operational item, but it has policy implications that I think the board wants to be involved in, so. Okay, any others? Okay, well, hearing nothing else, is there any closing public comment? I believe we do have some closing public comment.
Marissa Sanderson?
Ms. Sanderson, welcome.
Hello, I'm a parent, have been for 20 years in the school system, and I feel like I need to express some concerns, that I'm not sure if anyone knows anything about or not, but there's a lot of things going on in the schools that you don't appear to know anything about, and I have been in the schools myself, personally, volunteering in the classroom many hours, and I've been there watching what goes on, and I'm really concerned. I don't think it's okay for, well, let me just say that someone needs to be more involved in what's going on. There's a lot of people covering over for each other, people not coming to work. I sat and waited for a principal, one of six principals, to show up to talk to me one morning, came back, I started at 7:00 that morning, waited till 10:00. No one was checked out, no one was on sick leave, no one had any meetings, there was no reason for them, apparently, to have been gone, the secretary said so. They're the ones that are left to handle everything. These people don't necessarily even come to work. I waited for one week, five days, for someone to show up and talk to me, and there was not a person that came to work. And I think if you are sitting here talking about these lovely things, I'm really glad about that, but I don't think you get it. I really think there's a disconnect here, and I am quite overly concerned. My children are older now, this isn't gonna affect them, it's not gonna help them at all, but if you don't know what's happening, and you're gonna sit here with smiles, I don't see it, I don't get it. So, it's not like it's an inside information, I just happen to be there. And I think there needs to be more times when people show up and wanna know what's going on, 'cause there are too many times. I've been, you know... I've been, you know, it's just absolutely sickening to watch someone not even show up to work to allow me to talk to them over such a situation that's timely. If it's timely, and it's about my safety and my kids, and it's about an issue with my child, I could not get through on the telephone, I could not, everything goes to voicemail in the morning and at 3:00 PM. In the middle of the time, you might get a voicemail that says la-la-la, but it didn't say, "If you need to speak to an administrator, please press 4." There wasn't even an option. So I just think that, as Mr. Caudill just said, that the issues need to be changed. You guys need to hear from people, and they're not able to come here at 2:00. I don't know why in the heck you would think they would be here at 2:00 in the afternoon. I probably represent 600 or so people that are not able to even be here, 'cause they're at work. You don't get to hear the truth, people. You need to open up this whole thing and allow people to talk, 'cause there's too much being shoved under the rug, people are hiding, totally covering for each other. And I'm sorry that I have to be the one to come here and tell you that, but I have more concerns than I could even express with 10 more seconds left. I just want you to know that it's not as good as you think it is. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson. And I know Deputy Superintendent McNeil is right there, and she would be happy to have you give her the specifics of any concerns that you have. That's what we're here for. So she's right there in the red jacket, and I know she'd be happy to hear from you.
I'll have to write my book and print it, okay?
Great, thank you. Any other public comment?
That's all I have.
Okay, great. All right, well, then we will stand adjourned until the next meeting, which is March 12.